So we're here, sorry, I'm coming. Yeah, okay.
We love and hope and all our brave heroes. We must defend our lives or we will perish. We shall protect our hearts from all across. But if the price is that for all we hold dear, then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail to be a consecrated nation. Oh Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Spilling our blood will count our freedom. The women stand that which have fallen so free shall always be a land of liberty. We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal. And through the crucible man's head we'll pass. When we are void, the wounds of battle to heal. We shall remember those who guide us. Then shall our throne fill the glorious song. Of victory we score o mine and all. Oh God, protect us from the ill before. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us the strength to live the humanist call. To give a nod to calm the conscience. Let's also rule to stop with transolutesness. To make this kind a land of righteousness.
A minute silence to the fallen heroes of Biafra and the time starts now. May the souls of departed heroes and heroines of Biafra rest in peace while their spirits continue to fight on unembodened odds as we take that very path to declare Biafra and to defend it. You say? You say? You say? Be the event in place. Everyone, Thomas is Diana, over to you please and you go with your program. When you need immediate team, you call us in. Thank you so much.
Norbert, Nazin Norbert.
Thomas Diana, over to you please. Unmute yourself, unmute yourself. Go with your program please. We've just finished the anthem.
Thank you, thank you media. Thank you very much. Time is, I welcome everybody and then time is of great essence for us tonight or this evening. So as such, we're gonna do a collective, you know, welcome. I'm welcoming all the administrators of North and South America. I know that a lot of you have been, you know, recognized or ID. If you're just coming in, please raise your hand so that the media can capture you.
Thomas is Diana.
We need to.
You are skipping your opening prayer on your item.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm just letting you know so that as the admins coming, you know, you ID them. So we have opening prayer by Marzi Ugogji Anukwe. Anukwe is at the Maryland headquarters. Yeah, as the Anukwe opening prayer.
Shall we open? Thank you, Tukokabiama. You are the beginning, you are the end. We are in the middle. We thank you for giving us a visionary leader. Marze Nande Tallo. We thank you for giving us an able Prime Minister who run with the fishes. Deva by Marze Nande Tallo. We thank you for we, the followers, who have had their voice of authority and glory. And today we are hopeful of getting our freedom. We thank you Father. We thank you Tukokabiama for all our ministers, every minister. They are doing magnificently great things to help what has seen their works. We thank you for our every meter man. Every day we tune our media, we hear their voices. None of them in the living room. All is by your spirit. Because about then Biafra to come and we are ready to take the Biafra. Now our Prime Minister, Marze Simon Eba, he hears your voice and directs him. Your spirit is in him. We pray that to continue to lead him wherever he's going. Not turn him back. His voice, whatever his face, his voice save the war, his voice save the enemy. When the enemy hear his voice they tremble. Thank you Father, all is by your dream. We thank you for today's occasion. We have come here today to pull our sausage together to achieve, not to break our freedom. Whatever we are being, we can get this opened by you and to down we shall get in the mighty name of Jesus Christ.
There were.
You are muted. Madam Diana, you are muted. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Thank you for that wonderful prayer. So introduction of the admins already done and I've already made a statement on that. And all the cabinet members here present too. I think Marzi Ogue, Finance Minister, please acknowledge the presence of cabinet members and British government.
Okay, thank you, thank you from Diana. Thank you, thank you. Because of time, I'm just gonna appreciate everyone here today first of foremost. Let me say a big thank you to our Prime Minister in the presence, in the person of Marzi Simon Eba and for all his cabinet member. All members of the cabinet, you are all welcome to the Tahoe meeting with our Prime Minister here in USA. Everyone here is appreciated. This later as the program goes on. Kindly raise your hand, indicate if you have to speak and to the power of what we are doing, please kindly do that. So because of time, we're not gonna be able to call every members of the cabinet one after another. So we can wrap up with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Marzi Finance Minister. The next item on the agenda this evening is presentation and breaking of cola knot by Maryland. So I call upon the Maryland Administrator, Marzi Josh. Over to you. Thank you.
Okay, special greeting to our PM and his member of cabinet and also our fellow Biafrans and fellow I mean. I bring you on this special occasion. I've gone to have it today. We are here to champion this cause that we have to win. I'm gonna win this war. I don't want to take much time. Go ahead and call Marzi Mike. Along that to do the presentation. And he passed the order. Moner, we assist to bring the program. Thank you very much.
I went as you. Because I need to be Biafra. Especially the Prime Minister. He is here. I need to go to the corner. And in the, that's right. Biafra, Inquisition, Resistance Force, Biafra Air Force, Biafra Marine. Because I need to go. Now the family. I need my name to go there. He needs to buy the digital support of this or why not? He need to, he need to. I was not getting. I have for that. Biafra, you're the other woman. He need to, he need to. That may move, that may move. And when he can not do that, that he can use. I went as you. I know for a reason. They, they were in the clear, Biafra. They didn't get much. Everything, everything. You need to, you need to. I went as you. He can tell I am. They can tell I am. I went as you. I need to, I need to. I'm a boy. I went as you. Yeah, so we can actually go. What's a year for them? I need to go. Yeah. I'm not. I don't want to watch and we will watch. I'm making $100 for a watch. We're 200 dollars. We're with that 300 PM for a watch. We're about 300 dollars, 300 PM. No, amen. Thank you.
You can, when they're ready, I'll be talking while they're here. Raise up your hand and the microphone handed over to you.
And Marzi Ugogji Anukwe. I'm adding $100. They will go to watch, be watching. With a $100, they will tear my state, our little state, Og. With a $100, I say, Marze Simon, our Prime Minister, no, number nine. Not, not. They will. They're general. I will not yet. I have no money. I have to do it. I need to, I need to. I can't go and see, I can't see. Then I can't. They will go and they will. I need where, I need one night, I need one night. So I will say, I will say. I need $100. They will judge. I have to. I know which if we Charles President. So I'm making $100. Whether I go or not, on behalf of us, for people's success. Thank you. Okay.
I'm on the chairman of a one. I will not yet. In the seats. I will give 100 dollars. They will all. This time on the day, thank you for giving us Biafra.
I'm Minister of Finance. Please remind them that we are in the era of a Gemma. So we have to get acquainted to that name. When you mention $100, you have to say 100 a Gemma. And there we continue from there. Very, very important. There were.
No, not that there were. So we, you know, what our comments is, right? What is it called?
Deva, I can tell you. Our good children. Our dear children. Your concern. You're great. We thank you for all your job, the cabinet and the media. But this is not. We have few so many in a short time. We thank you for giving us Biafra. We're taking a cola for $100. Thank you for keeping me working. Ever. You know. But only, but only. I see you. 100 a Gemma. I just. I'm trying to be a woman. That's right. I'm the same in that. Making us need a Gemma. 100 a Gemma. No.
Okay. Marzi Ogue Tukokabiama. Finance Minister. Our PM, you are welcome to USA and as Finance Minister, I'm still doing my part. I'm taking a cola note on behalf of our Prime Minister and his cabinet and Maryland's life for the summer of 2000. Our show, 2000 with Gemma. I'm going to have 2000. 2000 US with Gemma. We in Maryland step. 500 dollars. I'm making 150 in Gemma. But if they say no, that would be.
See, we did the thing because I have to say my own. I am a GPT Gemma record holder. Okay, the one, the two other one, let me say 4. I want to let, I'm making 100. We got 600 a Gemma. Marzu Godji. My name is my own. We were a Gemma. I'm making 100 a Gemma, obviously 400 a Gemma.
Okay, I think. Yeah.
So my members are all, are all moving. They are surprisingly because a Gemma, I hope we are as the admin of Maryland. I'm making 200 a Gemma, they were all Gemma. Thank you very much. Very well. Okay. Next one.
Okay, hello. My name is Kita Raker. Marze Simon. Thank you for what you are doing for us. This is the first time I'm coming to the Biafra house. I feel at home.
Wow.
I made you 100, I made you 100 a Gemma. To say thank you and welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, from Diana. And when I think.
Diana, unmute yourself. Diana, unmute yourself please.
Thank you. Thank you, Maryland, for that wonderful presentation. Please, may I announce and establish that the monetary units for our donation this evening is a Gemma. Please, a Gemma.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next.
Thomas Diana, Thomas is Diana. Thomas is Diana, before you go to the next item. A lot of people and visitors and those in Europe and other places that have come to visit you in America would like to also take their cola. Maybe to their states or to their family or to their counties. So let's give them some time. Let's raise phone before you go to the next agenda, please. Thank you so much. All right, please.
Thank you very much. I got sent.
The floor is open to everyone. Come and support Maryland. That is our head office. Come and get your cola. It is breaking of cola. It is breaking of cola. Come and welcome here. It is breaking of cola knot. My peace of the gods, your hand is up. Over to you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, you can hear me.
Okay, I greet you, Your Excellency Marze Simon Eba and all the wonderful, wonderful ministers here and all the wonderful Biafrans. I greet you. I'm at work, so I'm gonna be quick. So I'm just greeting the, our our Prime Minister, the Excellency, with 100 a Gemma. I'm gonna send the receipts immediately to the admin, please. And also, I want to ask the Prime Minister, he said something about the the clothes, you know, the clothes we're going to wear. In Finland, he said suit black and blue, I think. Blue and black suit. Is it sky blue or navy blue? Thank you.
Anything goes blue. Any blue-black goes. So whether it is dark blue, navy blue, anything blue goes so long, so long as it is a western star.
Thank you so much, Your Excellency. I, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Breaking of cola, breaking of cola. Come and take cola to your state. Answer your state's name. Answer your family name. I'm Sony, I think the Minister of Communication. Yeah, I think Diane can go ahead. Whoever that is coming along the line can raise hand and order. But let Diana go ahead with the program.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Somebody is there, somebody is there, you know, we're just saying so. And we'll continue. Okay. Myabu Amemeka, over to you. Make it snappy, please.
Okay, thank you so much, my lovely one. On behalf. Uh, on behalf of. Look at you know though. We are correct, I never would do na two hundred a Gemma.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. President Diana, over to you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda. Is Welcome Address by Pharmacist Diana. The USA Continental Red. Before I go ahead. I will give Maryland the opportunity for them to get ready for the next item. Which is gonna be. Maryland Bridge Members Dance. And um the media team already has the tape, so I just want them to get ready because we don't wanna waste time. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and then I say welcome to our PM, His Excellency Marzis Simon Egba. I also greet and welcome. Our Supreme Leader, I know he's not here, but I must welcome him. Marzim Nande Kano. I welcome all cabinet members of the Biafra government in exile. And then in de facto homeland. I welcome all the ministers, representatives, admins, I say, welcome to you all. And then I welcome all our armed forces for the great work you're doing. I say, thank you, and I'm using this opportunity also to say, may God bless you in what you're doing. And I welcome you too, I know you all must be watching from wherever you are. I also greet all Biafrans and friends of Biafrans for your great support. Because um we really appreciate your support immensely. I honor and remember all our heroes, I say collective welcome to everybody, none. I start this evening. By making a special case. For Biafran women and mothers. We are women and a special God's creation. We are Biafran women. We are the daughters of Biafra. We are Biafran mothers and sisters. Many of us have watched our children, husbands, relatives. Compounds and villages. Killed and decimated, but just being Biafrans. We are petrified because we do not know what comes next. We have cried, we have welled. We have been suppressed and subjugated. Many of us have run, keep running without any reprieve. In the Zulu country. On the other hand. I am fortunate, I am an American citizen. As such, I am blessed to have freedom and know what freedom is. But the fact that I am a Biafran whose people. Are denied freedom by the Nigerian government terrorists. Is the reason why our Prime Minister is here tonight for this town hall meeting. I'd like to use this opportunity to address. Those people in Nigeria or other places. Who always tell the diasporic Biafrans. To come down to Nigeria and fight. You don't have to be in another person's country to fight. To these people, I say, your ignorance stinks to heavens. You are he who knows not and does not know that he doesn't know anything. I say, matter of fact, even trying to put up an argument with such a person is just a waste of time because they are irrelevant. They do not know. How would they water, now I'm having a hard water. And I say that not even the angels can make this habit plausible. Biafrans or foolish Nigerians. Because you all are tools to your slave masters. The earlier you know that, the better for you. And also the intellectuals and Biafran traitors and the delegitimized Zulu servants in Biafra. I say, you trying to partner with some people you call your friends or from other tribes. That latch onto you to make themselves relevant. Please, you're gonna have to wake up. For the rude awakening. Because freedom is your only breath of life. Our Supreme Leader Marzim Nande Kano, I know but to be. Are the hopes, aspirations and ideals of Biafrans. Why Biafranland has been the most peaceful in the Zulu country? By the delegitimized Zulu servants and the Nigerian terrorist government. Have made Biafranland the epicenter of genocidal and unwanted killing of Biafran race. That is now heading into extinction if we do not defend ourselves. The blood of true innocent Biafrans that have soaked the mother earth of Biafranland. And other lands in the Zulu country. Says that the heavens are not happy with what is going on. And that blood must be avenged by God. And by our children who are now protecting us, making sure that we defend ourselves. Biafra is the spirit. That fights anything, anyone that fights Biafra. So, the genocidal war. Against us has inadvertently produced genuine transformative Biafran generation. That truly know the value of freedom. That have now said enough is enough and never again. On these notes, I say thank you to our Supreme Leader. And our uh Prime Minister, the game changer. So I say to you today, no, they will mama a Biarola and thank you all. So, like I mentioned earlier, we're gonna go back to the headquarters to Maryland. They have um a dance for the PM, over to you, Media, from Maryland. Can you hear me?
Please, yes, I can hear you, thank you. Um, I want you to confirm if this sound is coming out from there. Is it coming out? Is the sound coming out?
Yeah, yes.
All right, thank you. So my ministers there at the head office, when you're ready to start shaking your waist, you let us know. That um we can put you on stage. And the camera should be well positioned to capture all of you because it's a groundbreaking ceremony. Seeing our elders do the dance.
All right, Marzis Sony.
Yes, my minister, are we ready?
Yeah, we're ready, yeah.
Okay. Like this now, we know we capture well, because that chairs, they block on our waist though. In front of that TV, uh, moon at it from front of TV. So that they will be captured on our way, moon at all day uh behind chair, moon at there in front of.
They will dance round the con, don't worry, I I get the cap, I I got this.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Biafras, I beg you. Biafras, I beg you.
But I don't want to man know, I do want them to do for you.
Yeah, Media, let's move, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Media, we have hands up, let's catch this. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Media. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Media, please, um, let me get the hands up. Media, can you hear me, please?
Yes, I found Diana, we can hear you. I saw a lot of you writing that you can't see the video, um. The video you were to see was the Prime Minister and our head office there dancing. We did not share the screen of another video, so these are the two videos you were supposed to see on the screen, thank you so much. Um, Mka Jai Okba, unmeet yourself, you have your hand up. Mka Jai, we cannot hear you.
Oh, but Sony, you called me?
Yeah, your hand was up, that's why.
Oh, okay, no, I was, uh, because I couldn't see the video. So I was begging you to open the video for me, I couldn't see. I couldn't see the dancing, I, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's your camera, you can start your camera now, you can start your camera. Anyone that needs camera open, please, you may start your camera now. You may start your camera now, you may start your camera now. All right, you may start your camera now. All right, uh, we have Adazion, over to you, your hand is up. Please, you can support the PM's dance, you can support uh our elders' dance there from our head office, uh, Adazion, over to you.
So I'm going to use fifty dollars, see you ever my PM, eh, eh, go. H and G, you know, ten, ten dollars, so one, two, three, four, five. Okay, I'm going to make you sixty for a Gemma, one, two, three, four, five, six. One, two, three, four, five, six, A J Ma for my PM.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we still have more hands up? No, all right, we continue.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Here. Maryland, that one is done. The next is on the agenda is keynote address by Prime Minister His Excellency. Mazze Simon, Igba and Jaco, Obato Bia, Agune Jamba One of Biafra. Please join me all as we beckon on this great alchemist of I Biafra freedom. PM Mazze Simon Igba, I salute and you're welcome.
Thank you very much, uh, Honorable Member, the Rep of the North and South America, uh, pharmacist Diana Enne, thank you very much for the work you've done so far. I welcome every one of you from the United States of America, Biafra's friends of Biafra's in the United States and those who have joined us this evening from all over the world. I welcome all of you to this town hall meeting. As you all recall and remember that I promise that every two weeks I will be coming to the United States to give special update to you in the United States as we progress in the liberation for Biafra. Today on is going to be very exceptional, very special update that I have for all of you. I have come to announce today that the liberation of Biafra has entered the ruthless, ruthless stage where our enemies will be dealt with ruthlessly. We have directed the Biafra Defense Forces that going forward, the Nigeria terrorist state, its army, its police will be treated with the highest ruthlessness in Biafra territory. Going forward, we know no friends, we know no brother, we know no siblings. So long as you carry arms in Biafra land against Biafra people, we would treat you as enemy without mercy. That particular stage start tonight as we enter this is at home tomorrow to demonstrate yet again that Nigeria has been delegitimized within Biafra territory. Our sit at home start tomorrow. And this is at home will happen on the twenty ninth, the thirty, the thirty first and on the second of August. We will be looking forward to see that every government houses, every offices, everything Nigeria government will be shut down. If we see anybody representing Nigeria opening anything in Biafra territory, we will engage that place. We have to make our stand very, very clear to the Nigeria state that as we approach the December second declaration, we will continue to engage them to make sure that terrorism will be wiped away and eradicated in Biafra territory completely. While other people in Nigeria, other ethnic groups, other indigenous nationalities in Nigeria are crying without help, we are not going to cry. Like I have said, the Biafra Defense Forces has been well briefed. When you engage enemy, there is no mercy. You do not engage human beings. The people that come with arms, armor tanks, helicopter, fighter jet to kill and bombard our territory are not human beings. Do not regard them, do not treat them as human beings, they are not. Kill them before they kill you. It is the highest self-defense that we have witnessed for the past two weeks. The worst situation in Biafra territory where houses, villages are being bombarded and burnt down. And of course, the Biafra Defense Force has proved that their capability to defend our land and have proven that to us. But this evening, after the emergency security briefing, we have come to inform Biafra people that going forward, you are going to be seeing wonders in Biafra territory. Do not move. This is a war that have declared on us and we are not going to shy away from this war. We have accepted this challenge, we have been able to prove that the Biafra Defense Force are well prepared, even with little equipment, we have been able to continue to disseminate Nigeria, neutralize these terrorists and they will never ever strive in our land. Remember the people in the United States, the reason we are doing this, coming to you every second week is for you to understand that you have a very important role to play in the liberation of Biafra. Do not listen to any threat coming from the Nigeria state. Do not listen to the names they call you, do not listen to the names they call me, do not listen to whatever they brand you, profile you. All you should be listening to is the program, the template and the pattern of the Biafra Republic Government in exile and the Biafra Defacto Government in the homeland. Today, I am very, very pleased to announce to you in the United States that the Biafra Self-Referendum has recorded over forty nine million vote. I don't think anybody in the world will listen to that and ignore it. Over forty nine million vote and still counting. This is the second phase of the Self-Referendum. I am telling you today that the world will be forced to listen and organize their own if they are not satisfied with the Biafra Republic Government in exile Self-Referendum. We are not shying away from fighting Nigeria, defending ourselves, but like I said, going forward, any terrorist in the military uniform in Biafra land carrying gun, when you get them, do not treat them like human beings, they are not human beings. And that's difference, that is the briefing destruction that have been given to the Biafra Defense Forces. So going forward, whatever images you see, do not move. It is a fight to finish, we are fighting for survivor. And let me tell you, in a war, you do not see your enemy as a human. And that's the difference we are going to make going forward. So when Nigeria think that we are going to sit in our comfort zone in Europe and America and watch our people being extinct, being killed, neutralized on daily basis, burn our villages and keep quiet and continue to agitate on social media, that time is over. And everybody that is supporting this government must be very proud of how far we have gone. Biafra's in the United States, I can assure you that so far, so good. We've met with decision makers, policymakers, influential politicians in the United States, both in the Congress and in other private institution. We've met many of them and I can assure you that when Wanza, Ihanapu Wanzanani Bu is dancing, that is something that is playing music. Telling you today, nobody will defeat Biafra this time around. And it is going to depend on your resoluteness and your support. We need to come together for those who are standing on defense, thinking that let us watch how they are going to do. Okay, let us watch if we are going to be part of Nigeria or not. Let's see if they are going to protest in Nigeria, I am telling you today, you are wasting your time. The opportunity is here for you to come on board and continue to be part of the history that we are making. For this reason, we have created a private meeting possibility to meet myself privately, especially those of you in the United States. If you have something that is bothering you, which is the reason you are yet to support the liberation after haven't seen the progress that Biafra, the Faktor Government and the Biafra Republic Government in exile, what the Biafra Defense Forces has made. That particular concern you had, the opportunity has been created for you to book an appointment for a private meeting. Meeting that will not be aired anywhere, meeting that will be confidential, the confidentiality is to the highest maximum. And you are going to have the opportunity to interact with me personally to know what your problems are and why you are yet to support Biafra. This opportunity is given to some of you in the United States and it is going to be happening on weekly basis. So if you have your friends in your Ibo Union or in your organization that are mocking you and telling you, oh, I have issues, why I have not supported Biafra, tell him that the opportunity is here. It is not time you are going to be sitting somewhere and be murmuring and thinking that we are going to fail. We are not going to fail, the only thing is that the opportunity may not come again at the end of the day and Biafra policy will deal with you. So my people in the United States, because of the stage we are entering now, as we approach December second, the declaration of the restoration of independence of Biafra, which is going to take place on the second of December, as we approach that December, we need resources, we need fund to be able to defend ruthlessly the Biafra land and make sure that we evict every presence of Nigeria even before December second. For this reason, we need to up our game. Upping our game is not by the weekly fundraising, which actually have done its part and we continue to do, but to step a bit forward to make sure that we have every equipment that is needed. Having the equipment is not a problem, but the fund continue to be challenged. And I have to inform all of you that in a war like this that we are fighting for survival, it requires money, it requires fund, it requires resources. Just like you see on another part of the world in Ukraine, we are not different. Ukraine is actually, we are facing more threat than Ukraine. Because in our own, Nigeria has, you know, declared a war and the war is being for secret. And what we are going to be doing going forward is to make sure we bring the result of this war that Nigeria has declared on us to the public by making sure we are publishing the result of how the Biafrans are defending themselves by neutralizing these enemies. So on this note, the people in the United States will, you know, look for a way to better the funding of the Biafra Liberation Army. And we have a solution. And the solution is on this day, you will have the privilege to unveil, the Biafra Republic Government in exile have the privilege to unveil a very strategic way to raise our defense fund in this day town hall meeting. And may I present to you, ladies and gentlemen, the Biafra IOU loan. The Biafra Government in Exile hereby unveil the Biafra IOU loan, which is going to be the game changer in the liberation of Biafra. The media team, over to you. Thank you very much. On this note, the IOU of the Biafra Republic Government in Exile on behalf of the Bank of Biafra is hereby declared open. And you do not have any reason to say you are yet to support Biafra financially. What this IOU mean is that if you invest fifty thousand, fifty thousand Ajema in the Biafra liberation, as soon as Biafra is restored, it will be doubled and repaired back to you. Those who have funded Biafra liberation up to this point, we have the record of everybody. And the Biafra government has a package for every Biafrans who has participated in the weekly fundraising up to date. The package is something that is very overwhelmed when you hear about it. And we're going to make it public very, very soon when we have done with the plan and the strategies that this will be done. So this does not interfere in any way, the weekly fundraising, as you know, it is only that we are looking forward to expand as we approach the Biafra Declaration in December. I want everyone to understand that what are going to do to Nigeria, I swear to God, you will never believe, it will be worse than what is happening in Sudan. Mark my word, and at the end, Biafra will come. I want you to understand that those who stood on the way of Biafa Freedom will die one after the other. And it is happening. And when they die, there is no remorse, we do not know mercy. This is a fight for survival, a fight for the rights to live of our people, of generation, of millions, eighty million Biafrans. So not the corrupt politicians, not the selfish politicians, not even one percent or the zero point zero percent of the people that are representing Nigeria within Biafra territory will break it and make us change our mind. My fellow Biafrans in the United States, if you have families back home, remember to inform them this evening that the sit at home civil disobedience that will be observed like never before in Biafra history since two thousand and twenty one will start tomorrow. The game is on, do not fall a victim of Nigeria propaganda where you will be killed and blame it on Simon Epa, it doesn't move me. What you have here is a symbol which only you saw during the two thousand and twenty N S A S protest, for those of you who may remember. This symbol and this thing is back. What it signify is danger. Do not mess with our freedom, you will go down for it. Today, our land will continue to swallow those who have come to kill our women and children. Do not be afraid of anybody. Do not be scared of what Nigeria state have threatened to do to you, believe me. They will kill us, we will kill them, at the end, Biafra will come. I want to use this opportunity to call on our lobbies, Elias, Elias to come in here and have a few minutes to address the United States, the Biafrans in the United States. Uh, please, the media team, if Elias is here, can you give him the mic?
Yeah, he's here, let me, let me give him the co-host, right, one minute. Okay.
I know this is not a part of your program, but you know, I crave your indulgence to allow Elias to give us just two minutes or three minutes of summary of what we have achieved this week. Because the achievements is nothing to write home about, in fact, it is overwhelmed. When you know what we have done this week, we've met highly, highly, you know, placed individuals in the United States and the result is overwhelming, you know, like I said. And I would like him to use few minutes to address all of you in the United States because it is because of you that we are able to make this happen. So we'll continue to break the doors. This week we are entering, we're gonna be, it's gonna be another, you know, powerful week. A lot of programs, a lot of meetings are taking place. And just within a month of having the lobbies firm, we have been able to break doors in the United States Congress and many US organization. So Elias, I welcome you, just two minutes of your time because actually you are not officially in the program. But you know, we use every opportunity we have and to tell our people what is going on, thank you very much, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Prime Minister, yes, when I saw that you were doing the town hall, I just thought uh, that I should just come on and perhaps say some remarks and say hello to all my Biafran friends. So great to see you, Mr. Prime Minister, and all of the guests here today. Uh, hello to all of you. As the Prime Minister has noted, we had an extraordinarily eventful week. Uh, many of you have probably seen many of these activities on the Prime Minister's Twitter handle, his ex handle, uh, and was extremely significant. Um, we've, the chief of, our wonderful Chief of Staff, uh, was in Washington DC. Uh, I took her to see some element of policymakers. We had an important meeting with Congressman John Carter of Texas, who was very sympathetic to our cause and uh, we briefed him on the accomplishments of the Brigi government, on the great leadership of the Prime Minister uh, and also spoke very bluntly about the criminal nature of the Nigerian government. And we got some very strong commitments of support from him, he's another friend of Biafra. Uh, we also had, and the Prime Minister made a tweet about it, and Prime Minister, I'm glad to see it. We also had, and the Prime Minister made a tweet about it, and Prime Minister, I'm glad to see it's over, now over a hundred thousand views, an important meeting with Ambassador T. Bournagi, who was a very senior official in the State Department for many decades, former US Ambassador to Ethiopia. He was the Assistant Secretary of African Affairs under President Trump between two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-one. And we had a very exceptional meeting with him. And, and we were able to speak to him for, I believe, over an hour. And he's someone who's very important because if the Republicans win in November, I believe he'll have an even more senior position in the next State Department. So we've received a lot of positive receptivity in our meetings. A lot of, and I'm not mentioning everything. I'm just mentioning a few things from this week. We've had many, many other meetings with senators and congressmen and so forth. I'm just relaying from the past few days. And we've privately gone some very strong commitments. In fact, a lot of them have said, why haven't you guys, why haven't the Biafrans approached us sooner? No one's ever brought this to our attention. So, you know, as, as the Bible says, ask and you shall receive. You know, so all, all we have to do is ask. We're now making our requests and it's being received very well. I think it's important to understand, and, 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 and this is what, you know, it's important for all the Biafrans to understand is for the United States to assist Biafra, there needs to be a formal request. There needs to be an explanation of the situation in order for them to intervene. You can't expect the international community or the US government to intervene with something when you haven't even formally asked them for something. You know, the analogy I would use would be if you go to a restaurant, you don't order off the menu and then you blame the restaurant for not giving you food, right? You have to tell the US, the international community, hey, this is the problem and this is what we want you to do. It's that simple. And we're doing it and we're doing it successfully and we're making a huge progress very quickly. And I'm very excited. And also, I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, I had the great honor on Thursday of visiting the Biafra headquarters in Maryland and meeting with the, with the diaspora. You have a marvelous headquarters in Maryland, Prime Minister, and it's, I think, a testament to the achievement of the government. And I was greeted with the most wonderful hospitality and graciousness and I appreciate the warmth I've received from many Biafrans so far. You have a beautiful headquarters. I, I, you know, I think it's a testament to your leadership, Prime Minister, and the achievements of this government. And I, I enjoy interacting with and learning from the Biafran diaspora. And in the evening, I hosted a get together with some diasporans here in Washington DC. And we're going to do many more of these. And I think this is a chance where the diaspora can learn from, from us in terms of our political activities, but we and myself can also learn from the diaspora. And we're going to be working more closely with the diaspora. I'm sure you saw the Prime Minister's tweet about how the government is going to start to interview people for political directors. We're going to be creating a political pact. And so our firm is going to assist with the creation of a proper infrastructure here in the United States in order to get the grassroots properly organized and mobilized. And our, both myself and my firm are going to help with that and we're going to work very closely with this new structure we're creating where all the grassroots energy can be channeled in an effective manner. So I just want to say this has been a great honor. We're making enormous progress in just the first month. And we'll be making much more progress in the months ahead. You know, I think we're going to be delivering some very big, big surprises for the zoo the next few months. They're, they're not going to know what's hitting. I mean, they're already very, you know, devastated by what we're doing, you know, they're being hit by all sides. Nigerian, you know, the Nigerian government is, is very worried. In fact, you know, you might have seen some of these think tanks in the zoo are writing these letters complaining to the US government. Oh, you know, what is this lobbying and we don't like it and so forth. So clearly, what we're doing is scaring them. And they should be scared, as I've said in the town hall on Thursday. So once again, it's a great honor, Prime Minister. I appreciate you indulging me in, in making my brief remarks. And I just thought to say hello since you were conducting this town hall and thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Elias. Thank you. All right, let's continue. And also, I would like to inform the Biafrans in the United States, you know, that very soon, we are, of course, that is not something I want, I want to announce here. So it's going to be a private thing. So let me not overtalk. So, Eric, please take over from me. Thank you. Unmit yourself, Diana.
Hello, unmute yourself.
Yeah, thank you. Please give a standing ovation to our Prime Minister and our lobbyists in the house. Thank you and welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next.
Diana, just before you continue, just before you continue. Diana, just before you continue, sorry, just one, one, a few seconds. Everybody can hear our lobbyists, you know, explaining what we find out. Or we find out that these people has been waiting for us to approach them. Nobody have approached these people for many years. And I wonder, you know, well, I don't know, but the officials we've met so far are only hearing stories. Nobody has officially from Biafra or any organization of Biafra agitator or anything has ever approached these people. And this is the first time. And we are paying huge amount from the criminals who surrounded Mazinandikan for many years. And nobody, nobody has officially approached these people. But by the special grace of God, they are not just only happy. They are very, very willing to see that Biafra finally has a government that is very well structured, well organized, and everybody is happy and willing to be part of the history that we are making. Clap for yourself, all of you in the United States, because it is you that make it possible. There were.
There were, there were.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Prime Minister. Thank you for all your doings, G C Kenar.
And again, one more last thing, one more last thing. Every cabinet member, every cabinet member, there is going to be emergency cabinet meeting immediately after this town hall meeting today. Very important.
Thank you.
There were.
Thank you.
Please, from them, just one second. We have two of our members that just showed up and they want just wanna, you know, be part of the color knot. So we, we just, if we can take two of them. From there.
Okay, thank you. Media, please, can you get them?
Okay. All help Biafra. All battle Biafra. Okay, mother care. I know, I have a reason. And there will be a hand. I give it. I know, see me today, gee, gee. Oja de ro. I know, pardon my, my, my. I wanna, why?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you, State of Maryland, from the headquarters of Biafra Republic government. So I'm gonna proceed to the next item on the agenda. And that is Bye Bye Nigeria. A song by Administrator Chinere Apple of Texas. I would also like to announce, she, uh, Admin Chinere has, you know, given me power to do so. She says she would like to donate this song to our media after the usage tonight. Thank you. Over to the media, the song Bye Bye Nigeria. So we're gonna rock this one because I am ready to say bye bye. Okaun'une chenba, ebele mi righe derekun. Okirikiri kana wuwo se, imanadila riye. Bo nyeweli kiliyelu, ibonye te re no mano. Ahama dike, ezigo wa chinake. The man will saw tomorrow, ebele mi righe derekuniki. Biafra International, we say bye bye Nigeria. Biafra International, a referendum is alright to you. Biafra International, we say bye bye Nigeria. Biafra is a whole, a referendum is alright to you. Bichi kere wo. Bichi kere wo. Bichi kere wo. Mami chi kere wo. Bichi kere wo. Bichi kere wo. Bichi kere wo. We are going home. Mami chi kere wo. Where the where this, no, no. All about to be here, one of Biafra. In here, I make a lady. Our people, when all the place gone. Oh, you must sign your name. Prime Minister, atakaka, ose no. Iwochiri no bo, moli nanya na digi. Then then we go get to Biafra, the land of freedom is alright to you. Biafra International, we say bye bye Nigeria. Biafra is a whole, a referendum is alright to you. Biafra International, say bye bye Nigeria. Biafra is a whole, a referendum is alright to you. Bichi kere wo. Bichi kere wo. Bichi kere wo. Mami. Bichi kere wo. Bichi kere wo. Bichi kere wo. We are going home. Mami bichi kere wo. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm sweating. That's, that's a beautiful one.
Yes.
That's a beautiful one. Thank you, thank you, Texas. Thank you. Okay, now I'm gonna, uh, we have a hand up. Can you please catch them before I move to the next item on the agenda?
Prince, Prince CK, Prince CK, unmute yourself. Prince CK, unmute yourself. Prince CK, unmute yourself. He's lowered the hand. Prince, you want to speak? Unmute yourself.
Hello. Hello.
Good evening.
Yeah, day one, no. Good evening. I, I want to appreciate everybody. I know today the Prime Minister visited Massachusetts. Uh, I wanna thank God for the great work God is using him to do. And add him fifty dollar, ne break ekula nots, to welcome the Prime Minister. A gemma, yeah, fifty a gemma, ne break ekula nots for the Prime Minister. So I'll forward it to the coordinator here. Uh, I have briefed him before this. Thank you so much. Bye bye.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so next to one of the main businesses of the day. States support, donation, presentation by the state admins. You're going to present your support and that of Kola nots simultaneously, at the same time. Things, you know, that's the best way for us to group it in order to keep to our time. Um, I'm going to call some of the states, you know, that we'll be leaving soon for work. So I'm gonna have to call New Jersey. Is New Jersey Administrator here? Oloma, is Oloma here? Oloma, are you here? If she's here, please let me know whenever she comes in. Okay, we have a hand, Galaxy A two three five G. Please, um, media, can you catch that hand before I proceed to state donations?
Galaxy eight twenty three five G, unmute yourself, you have the mic.
Praise the Lord. I'm, I'm brother, I'm brother four from, uh, Oklahoma City. So I want to do my donation and the support and also take my Kola.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, I just thank, um, the PM and the, all the ministers and all the media. And every Biafrans, both homes and abroad, I just thank God for everybody. And I pray that God will continue to keep us. And also we pray for our men. That, uh, fighting on our behalf, God will continue to strengthen them and be with them. And I pray that everything will be alright. Biafra is coming and we shall get there. So for that, um, I'm using two hundred dollars, uh, two hundred a gemma. Sorry for that. Two hundred a gemma to take Kola. And also for the PM visit, I'm giving two hundred a gemma. And, uh, sister blessing, our mommy in Oklahoma State. Is donating hundred dollars for PM visit. And also Florence is donating two hundred a gemma for the PM visit. So the total of everything is seven hundred dollars from Oklahoma. Praise the Lord.
Thank you, thank you very much, Oklahoma. Thank you. Um, I can see Oloma, New Jersey Admin's hand here. Please, Oloma, you can go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Greetings to everyone, all protocol observed, our indubitable PM. His Excellency Mazza Simonetma, you're welcome to the United States of America Town Hall Meeting. Reading New Jersey as saying welcome. My update today for his coming to America are. Peace vows, seven hundreds, Mazze Everest, five hundreds, Oloma, three hundreds. Wada, Nonyem Komilike, two fifty, Bunnyface, two hundred, OG, hundred, Mary Ikay, fifty. Um, Kiroka Ezeki, two hundred. And, uh, the New Jersey is taking the Kola nots with hundred dollars. Thank you, everyone. Total is two thousand two hundred today. Thank you.
Two thousand two hundred a gemma.
A gemma, yes.
A gemma, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you, New Jersey. Is there any admin that is at work or that's gonna be leaving soon? Please identify yourself so that I can get you before I move on.
Yes, myself.
Alright, miracle.
Yeah. Uh, good afternoon, everyone, and all protocol observed. I'm just sneaking, I'm, I'm, I'm coming from the work. Uh, from Indiana, we are using fifty dollar, three P a gemma to take our Kola. And we are giving the support for, uh, indubitable leader with, uh, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Thank you and God bless everyone.
So that's a total of three hundred a gemma, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Indiana. Alright, okay, Father Anthony, your hand is up.
Okay, I've got a night. Again, I thank everybody, um, for the PM. About to go for mass, so I thank you for giving us this opportunity to, to come in first. And then when we finish, if I still here, I will still join in. So I'm using, uh, one hundred for Kola not and one hundred for PM visit. So two hundred from my, from Father Anthony, two hundred a gemma. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for Anthony. Okay, um, um, Faith, Florida admin.
Thank you, Mother. Thank you, Prime Minister and your executive team, all the admins, the media team. I greet everyone. PM, thank you so much for the good job. You are the good guy. Um, from Florida, I have Dr. Onoha to pick the Kola not for Florida. I don't know if you can give him a mic to speak.
Can he raise up his hands to be identified, please?
Let him raise his hand, please. Onoha, are you there?
It's Gio, Dr. Gio.
Dr. Gio. Okay, Dr. Gio, please, uh, unmute yourself. Unmute yourself, Dr. Gio.
Alright, as usual, welcome, uh, uh, PM. I'm going to use a hundred dollars to pick the Kola for Florida. Yeah, in addition to that, I will give a hundred dollars for the, for his coming. So two hundred dollars from me, okay? And, uh, our admin will continue with the rest. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Onoha. So I have, uh, Mazze Joe, uh, Hans, hundred dollars and from myself, two hundred dollars. Making it a total of, uh, five hundred from Florida for this way.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Five, five hundred a gemma. Thank you. Yes, thank you. I'm Faith NK, North Carolina.
Thank you so much, Ma. Thank you, uh, PM. Thank you, all the admins, the Bridget Cabinet, everyone. Um, to go straight to it, um, one of our brothers, uh, Ikonso RRP is using a hundred dollars to pick the Kola not. And the rest are as follows. Um, me and my humble spouse, we are giving fif- fifty a gemma. And Ikonso, uh, RRP is also giving another hundred a gemma. Our sister Bridget is giving fifty a gemma. Our sister Regina is giving, uh, fifty a gemma. Our sister Wanyoma is giving fifty a gemma. Our sister Nancy is giving thirty a gemma. Uh, brother, uh, Lexi, also known as, uh, Eke Biafra, is giving a hundred a gemma. Our brother Sammy is giving, uh, fifty a gemma. Our sister, uh, Victoria is giving thirty a gemma, totaling up, um, uh, six hundred and ten. Uh, a gemma, all already redeemed. So I wanna thank my, uh, North Carolina family for always giving and supporting for our PM's visit. And also giving monthly for our monthly contribution. I encourage you to continue. And if you're hearing my voice and you're North Carolina, please reach out to me. Join us. This freedom is for all of us, for our future and for our children. My number is six seven eight two zero 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 two one seven. Thank you so much. Are you?
Thank you, thank you very much, North Carolina. Thank you. The next person is Osita. Osita, unmute yourself, please, Osita. Osita, here. Okay, I'm gonna go psychologically now, straight to the states. State of Arizona, Lawrence Aba Kelo, are you here?
Osita is here.
Okay, go ahead, Osita.
Yeah, Osita from New York. And, uh, welcome our Prime Minister. On behalf of my family, ne ekale, Prime Minister, na your money, lo name, and aquadoya. Me and my family with five hundred dollars.
Thank you, five hundred a gemma.
Yes, I'm gonna send the receipt to Sister Lo.
I did, ma. Thank you, five hundred a gemma, and that's, you know, personal donation.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, if you've been called, um, Florida, EJ, can you please raise, uh, bring down your hand, it's still up. Arizona is here, Mazze Kelo, over to you. Okay, unmute just, okay, over to you, Mazze Kelo.
Thank you, rep. Um, Prime Minister, we welcome you again to Arizona. You are very much welcomed. Um, the cabinet members welcome you, the teams. And of course, our angels in, uh, in our land of Biafra and, uh, on the high seas, we continue to pray for you. And the Mosai will provide all the resources that you need to defend that land and the destruction will be to our enemies. So, uh, PM, we, uh, welcome you here with, uh, fifty do- fifty a gemma for the Kola. And, um, for the beautiful dance that you, you led with, uh, team, uh, we are welcome you, uh, spray you with a five hundred a gemma. And then we welcome you with a thousand a gemma, totaling one thousand six hundred and fifty, sorry. And our sister, uh, charity, Okoro, um, is welcome you here with a hundred and fifty a gemma. So the total from Arizona is one thousand six hundred and fifty a gemma.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Dawa.
Had a connection problem. After the five hundred, it was a, um, a gemma for the dance, I didn't get the rest of the things that you said. Um, okay, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. Then you can update me later with that.
Okay, I was having problem on muting. Um, so, uh, it's a fifty a gemma for Kola.
I got that.
Okay, and then a five hundred a gemma for the dance.
I got that.
And then a one thousand from, uh, from Arizona family here. And, uh, our sister charity, Okoro, one fifty. A gemma, so the total is, uh, one thousand six hundred and fifty a gemma.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Arizona. Okay, um, the next, um, um. Florida, if, if you're going to give an update, can you please hold? Let's try and catch, um, the other states. Um, are you trying to do updates, Florida? Okay, I'm gonna move on now. California, Ada Onu, is she here? Is California here? California, if they come in, please let me know. Connecticut, Chris, is Chris here? Illinois, is Illinois here? Illinois, Longinus. Back to work. Maryland, Josh. Maryland, Josh at the headquarters.
Alright, good evening, good afternoon, good morning, good night, wherever you are. This is Maryland, I mean. We are presenting, uh, updates. And, uh, like you see, today is our day. I'm thanking everyone for the support they have given so far. Uh, not to waste your time, I have to go forward to present the update, uh, for the PM visit today. Number one is Mazze Joshua, three hundred a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit and hundred for Kola nots. That makes it three hundred a gemma. The next is Wada Justin, who does, uh, two fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit and fifty for Kola nots. The next, Wada Noye, two fifty a gemma. PM visit, two hundred and, uh, Kola nots fifty, as total of two fifty. And Mazze Mike, five hundred a gemma. Three hundred for PM visit. Two hundred for Kola nots, a total of five hundred. The next, Wada Unique, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit, fifty for Kola nots. Wada Angel, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit, Kola nots fifty. Mazze Hydren, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit and fifty for Kola nots. Mazze, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit, fifty for Kola nots. Mazze Austin, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit and fifty for Kola nots. Wada Jones, I pray, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit and fifty for Kola nots. Next, Wada Chin, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit and Kola nots fifty dollars and fifty a gemma. Wada Unique, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred PM support and fifty for Kola nots. Mazze Katri, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for, uh, PM support and fifty for Kola nots. Mazze Divin, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit and fifty for Kola nots. Mazze Manu, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit and fifty for Kola nots. Mazze Divin, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit and fifty for Kola nots. Wada Mel, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM visit, fifty a gemma for Kola nots. Wada Angel, two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for PM support and fifty for Kola nots. And fifty for color note. Mazo Peter. Opera K. Two hundred and fifty a gemma. Fifty for color not support and two hundred for P M visit. Mazinangang. Two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for P M visit. Fifty for color not support. Mazo Victor. Kara. Two hundred and fifty. A gemma. Two hundred for P M visit and fifty for color not support. Mazesabastin Opera. Uh, 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 sorry. Two hundred and fifty a gemma. And two hundred for P M, uh, visit and fifty a gemma for color not support. Mazie Ugaji. Anoké. Two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for. P M visit. And fifty for color not support. Mazesonde. Ezek. Two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for P M visit. Fifty for color not. Mazie. Ano. Two hundred and fifty a gemma. Four P M. Visit and fifty for color not support. And. Mazie. Kristen Elewachi. Two hundred and. Fifty a gemma. Two hundred for, uh, P M visit and fifty for color not support. And finally. Maz Chas. Frederick. Two hundred and fifty a gemma. Two hundred for P M visit. And fifty for color not support. And the total amount. Um, so with seven thousand. Fifty a gemma. For Maryland. Thank you very much. I still have one more. He's coming out.
Maryland, 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 Maryland.
Maryland.
We're here.
Maryland.
Who are not, who are not. 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 You might come to. Oh, never. Yeah, man. Oh, never. Yeah, man. Oh, never. Yeah, man. Yeah, man. Yeah, man. Oh, no. Airborne to the. Airborne. Airborne. There, one.
Uh, uh, thank you, Maryland. Oh, my goodness.
Can I go on?
Yes, you can go on, sir.
All right, all right, all right. Um. The rank table. Could I want to take it by the members of Maryland. Um, initially. Uh, that when we started. Is he ready? For announcements. So the first. Name is Mazie. Mike Omoaga. Six hundred a gemma. A second. Mazie Gorz. Anoké. Four hundred a gemma. Chief Austin Williams. One fifteen a gemma. Chief Charles Valerius. One fifteen a gemma. Madame Tignere. Or any one. One hundred a gemma. Mazie Kevi. Two hundred a gemma. Mazie Oketukul. Get him our table finance minister. Going out in two thousand one hundred a gemma. Konaka, Konaka.
Wow.
All right, uh, that's. Mazie. Not sure if I don't have being that mean. Two hundred.
How could the cover?
Mazita. Okay, K. Four hundred a gemma. My piece of the girls of Biafra. Four hundred a gemma. Uh, then Mazie Odissa. And, um. And you know, I'm sorry. Fifty a gemma. Mazie Divinity Opera K fifty a gemma. And Mazie Prince C K fifty a gemma. And that gives you two thousand. All right, I'm sorry. The total comes up. Three thousand four fifty a gemma. So when you add. Seven. Seven thousand fifty a gemma plus, uh. Three thousand what? Four fifty. That gives you ten, ten, ten thousand hundred. Right, ten thousand. Five, five hundred.
No, no.
Ten thousand.
Uh, somebody go. You have special, you have special jingle, you have special jingle, the first one. The one minute jingle, the one, the one minute Biafra Republic Government Exile Jingle, no, 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 no. In the morning on the office, man, I'm not a man today, DJ.
I will be ready. I want to go, I will. But. Yeah.
Biafra's Struggle: A Historical Overview. The Biafra Conflict, which lasted from one thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven to one thousand nine hundred and seventy, was a complex and tragic chapter in African history. This section provides a high-level introduction to the key events and struggles of the Biafra people's fight for independence from Nigeria. The Biafra Government in Exile. Structure and Objectives. After the fall of Biafra, the government in exile was established to continue the fight for self-determination. This section explores the organizational structure, leadership, and core objectives of the Biafra government operating outside of Nigerian control. Organizational Structure. The Biafra Government in Exile was led by key figures from the original Biafran administration, including military commanders and political leaders. Primary Objectives. The main goals were to garner international support, secure resources and funding, and strategize a path towards the eventual restoration of an independent Biafra state. Challenges. Operating in exile, the government faced significant logistical and resource constraints in carrying out its mission to liberate Biafra. Diplomatic Efforts. Engaging the international community. The Biafra government understood the importance of gaining global recognition and support. This section details their diplomatic outreach to foreign nations, international organizations, and the media to raise awareness and garner assistance for the Biafran cause. One Lobbying Campaigns. The government in exile launched aggressive lobbying efforts to win over key decision-makers and influential figures in the international community. Two Media Engagement. Biafran leaders actively engaged with global media outlets to share their narrative and mobilize public opinion in their favor. Three Seeking Recognition.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Special thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Maryland.
Yeah, we have one more update.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Go ahead.
And we're also that we can move to the next program. All right, see, uh, we might come back for this.
All right, uh. Uh, you need some minutes, I'll be back. Uh, not to take your turn, I'll be back. No update, I'm just coming. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Maryland. Let's continue. Yes, um, um. E J, I still see your hand up. E J, Florida. Um. Okay, I'll give you a minute.
One, uh, update. This update is anonymous and is giving us hundred.
Florida, one minute, please.
Ah. Are you hearing me?
Yes, I can hear you. I can hear you right, right on.
Update. Hundred dollars from anonymous giving us, oh my God. Six hundred a gemma, please. I won't make the mistake again. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, that's six hundred. Next is Massachusetts. By. Mazie Victor Ebuna. Mazie Victor Ebuna, are you here? Please sit now by raising your hand. No?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, me, yeah, I, I got you. Michigan, please get ready after Massachusetts. Thank you, Mazie Ebuna.
Thank you, thank you, everybody in there, Wano. Good evening from here, Massachusetts, you know, I'm the. Welcoming our great Prime Minister in North America. And also our honorable founder, Zeyato. Thank you all for your good work. All the media cabinet members, all my fellow admins, I wanna thank every one of you. Um. Uh, before I say something. Um, I have to. Correct something here. I don't know if it's correction or I need to be corrected. Uh, I had. For Maryland. Saying that Mazie Prince CK fifty a gemma. Uh, I don't know, Prince CK is from Massachusetts. And he has. Paid the, send the receipt to me. So I don't want any duplication. So is there any, is there any problem with that?
No problem, no problem, right on, right on, sir, right on, right on.
Right on. We, I'll take care of that later.
Okay, okay. And now, um. Yeah, in Massachusetts, where people are coming up, we have new members coming in. You know, people are listening to what you are preaching. Uh, and, um, so, so far, so good. Uh, we have, um, Prime Minister, two types of a gemma. One column is for the Prime Minister welcoming visit. Another column is for the, um, uh, color notes. Uh, no, and so are we, uh, beginning from me, if I can begin. Um, uh, I have, um, Prime Minister welcoming visit twenty, fifty dollars. Um, and color note twenty-five dollars. Innocent Onyenewo. Prime Minister visits fifty dollars. Um, color note twenty-five dollars. Emmanuel Chidozie. A Prime Minister visits fifty dollars. Um, color note twenty-five dollars. Toku and Mecca Omuchewa. Prime Minister visits twenty-five dollars. Color note twenty-five dollars. Amara. Um, our, um, sister Amara Aturuchi. Prime Minister visits twenty-five dollar, color note twenty-five dollars. Rosina Aldo. Uh. Prime Minister visits fifty dollars, color note twenty-five dollars. Prince CK, as I said. Prince CK. Prime Minister visits fifty dollar, color note fifty dollars. Uh, Stephen Igbo. Uh, Prime Minister visits fifty dollar, color note. Twenty-five dollar. Sister Kaja Opera. Um. Prime Minister visits three hundred dollars. The, the total now is, uh. Uh, Prime Minister visit total is six hundred and fifty dollars. Then color notice is two hundred and twenty-five. Sorry, a gemma, sorry, sorry, a gemma, not a dollar. Two hundred and twenty-five a gemma. Then the total, overall total is eight hundred and seventy-five a gemma. This is what we got now.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Massachusetts. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. It's Michigan represented by.
Uh, the, the, uh, rep, you did not correct him, uh, for a gemma.
Uh, that will skip me. Okay, Mazie. Yeah, Mazie Ebuna, do it one more time, please.
No, 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 I want a time, but at least that, uh, he knows that it is a gemma, not a dollar.
I know that, that's why I corrected myself. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Thank you. So as we move on, Michigan. Represented by Dimma Osisogbo. Are you here? New Mexico. If you're here, please raise up your hand. New Mexico Florence Ezims. Are you here? Okay, um. Oregon Chica Amokamara. Amokamara. Are you here? Texas, um, no, 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 no. New York. New York. Love Akabundo, please. She, is she still here? I, she was here earlier.
Yes. Okay, thank you for meeting me. I'm here, mama.
Okay, you're welcome.
Hey, um. Greetings to our P M. All the cabinet members. All ministers. Media team. Fellow admins. Biafrans and lovers of freedom. I welcome you to U S. This is our state contribution for today. Fandana, two hundred. A gemma. For welcoming P M. Fifty a gemma for color note. Loved admin. Hundred and fifty to welcome P M. Fifty for color notes. Florence, fifty. Ifany, hundred. Ezimwa, hundred. Duru family, five hundred. Etel, one hundred. A total of one thousand three hundred a gemma. From New York. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, New York, for that. So coming down. Ohio, is Ohio here? She went Ekaama, Ohio. Oregon, Amokamara. Texas, Chiniere Apple. Texas, Chiniere Apple. Is she still here? She was here earlier. Yes.
I'm here.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm here. All right, I just wanna say special greetings to my indomitable Prime Minister Mazie Simon Eba. And to your cabinet members, honorable ministers. To our wonderful lobbyists. To, uh, rep. My, uh, pharmacist Diane. And also to our wonderful media. My co-admins. And fellow Biafrans. I just wanna say thank you all for being here. And make you cook a cabia, my bless you. And especially to my Texas family members. So thank you all for all that you all are doing. We highly appreciate all, every one of you. And God bless you. So today, um. The list of donors from Texas. Yeah, I'll start from Mazie H. He's giving one hundred a gemma. Ezada Comfort Okwana. One hundred a gemma and fifty. A gemma for color note. Uh, Chiniere Apple. Eighty dollars and eighty a gemma and twenty a gemma for cola. Anonymous, hundred a gemma. Mazie John Daya, fifty a gemma. Our sister Tochi N. She's giving fifty a gemma. Ezibada Chiniere Amunek. One hundred a gemma plus forty a gemma. Which is one hundred and forty a gemma. Our own Mazie Nata and Chukulobe. He's giving one hundred a gemma and. Our own Mazzy Nata and Chukulobe, he's giving one hundred a gemma and then fifty a gemma for color notes. Our dear sister Uduaki Yoho, she's, she's giving two hundred a gemma. Our evangelist King, fifty a gemma. Our own evangelist Testy Ifi, eighty a gemma. Our dear Mazzy Felix Okonkwo, one hundred a gemma. Our Okada Helen Anujulu, two hundred a gemma. Our Igwe Biafra, one hundred, sorry, our Igwe Biafra is fifty a gemma. Then, um, Ezibada Ifa two. Onugogo, one hundred a gemma. Our dear sister Abigo Akuta is forty a gemma. Chief Emeka Ele, Elegonie, fifty a gemma. Ezibada Uzochuku Chibu is fifty a gemma. Our Mazzy Emmanuel and Ngazi Orisakwe is hundred a gemma. Then in total, we have, um, for the contributions, we have. One thousand four hundred and fifty a gemma and for the, uh, color notes. We have two hundred and ten a gemma and our grand total is one thousand eight hundred and fifty a gemma from Texas, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you Texas, thank you very much, thank you, yeah. Washington DC, Ngazi E, is she here? Uh, is, does she have a representative? And if she's not here, someone is supposed to represent her, not here. Washington, um, Washington State Mazzy Felix Eze, please raise up your hand, I know he was here earlier. Mazzy Felix Eze.
Thank you very much, thank you my, ever. Pharmacist Emma. Greetings. To our Excellency. PM Eka SN. Thank you and greetings. All my fellow admins. All cabinet members. Media team. Fellow veterans. We are encouraged with recent developments. Up and down, left and right. All in favor of Biafra. And we will continue to be encouraged. Thank you so much, everybody, for what you are doing. From here in Washington State. I am a lone. Ranger. For now. And, uh. I'm taking the color note with thirty a gemma. And our PM's visit with seventy a gemma. A total of hundred a gemma for this visit. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Mazzy, thank you, thank you, we appreciate you. Okay, I see that, um, uh, Michigan is here, Dimma. Yeah. Take the center stage, Dimma.
Uh, greetings to everyone. I'm from Michigan. Anajaya Nama, we have, um, hundred and twenty. Fifty for OG and, um, seventy for PM's visit. Thank you very much, Anajaya Nama.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Um, Virginia, 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 Emadike, Emadike. Is he here? If you're here. For the admins, if you're here, please, and your state hasn't presented. If you wanna do so, please raise your hand. Okay, I see Mazzy Amokamara, Oregon is here, Mazzy Amokamara, please present for your state. Thank you.
Yeah, um, yeah, I was trying to, uh, talk before, but I couldn't, um, un, unmute myself. So, uh, as I'm here now. Mostly, I'm the one of my, my other members, uh, some of them, maybe they will talk to me later, but for me. I welcome my PM with fifty dollars and, um, and, uh, a color note fifty dollar from me, Mazzy Amokamara, the admin, thank you.
Thank you, that's a hundred.
Yeah, and I will, I will, I will call you later, uh, Madam Doctor, I will call you because that's something I'm, yeah, thanks.
You're welcome, um, um, Emadike, Emadike, Virginia is here.
Okay, yes, I am, I can speak now.
Okay, okay.
Greetings to all Bia France, greetings to my Prime Minister, and greetings to the, um, cabinet. Greetings to all the admins. I, um, I'd like to report. Uh, Madame Jacinta. Uh. Donated thirty five dollars for PM's, excuse me, thirty five a. Donated a hun- excuse me, a hundred a gemma for the cola and four hundred a gemma for the. Donation and the total comes to six hundred and sixty. A gemma.
Gemma, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any, thank you, Virginia, is there any other admin in the house? That has not represented their states, please do so at this time. Because I'm not gonna continue chronologically, I want to get those that are here now. Okay, we have Obi Eze, Obi Eze, go ahead and unmute yourself and then please present what you have. Obi Eze. Obi Eze in the house? Okay, while he's getting ready, David Moha, please, over to you.
Good Bia France, greetings. I salute all of you through Bia France that, um, Almighty God is using to do this job. My special greetings go to our PM, EESN, thank you, thank you, thank you. Love you so much, I'm from Illinois. I have contributed and sent my receipts to my. Um, admin. I contributed fifty for PM's visits. And I contributed fifty, fifty gemma for picking color note for Aludo, which is my state. Thank you all, we're going home.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, um, mighty dots. Please unmute yourself.
Obi Eze, Obi Eze is here.
Okay, Obi Eze is in the house, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry for the, my, I, I tried to unmute myself, it was taking a, a, a minute. I just tried to, uh, welcome the PM's visits. And also to support my Texas, uh, family with a, a hundred a gemma, I will send my receipt to my admin junior.
Thank you, thank you. Um, you're welcome, mighty dot.
Hello, um, good afternoon sister.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and greetings my Prime Minister and, uh, all the protocol's details are, um. I'm just doing for me today from South Carolina, um. Fifty dollars, uh, and fifty a gemma for the color notes and, um. Hundred dollars for the visit and fifty a gemma, sorry, I keep saying hundred dollar, fifty a gemma for the. The seat, of course, I always try to honor the seat for every town hall meeting, so making it two hundred dollars, thank you. Uh, two hundred a gemma. Hmm.
Thank you, that's South Carolina, yeah.
Yes.
Um, mighty dot, are you Emmanuel Yusobi?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you very much for South Carolina. Yeah, is there anyone else in the house here representing the state or that hasn't been heard or called? If so, this is your time to do it. If not, we're gonna move to the next, to the next, um. I, item on the agenda, uh, we've been here for about three hours now, so the next few minutes, we wanna round our things up. We do not want to keep this running for too long. So the next is Maryland again. Poem, Movement of the Sun by Wada Nanyi Chima. For that, Honorable Chukuma, Njaku raised hand, can you please take it up for one minute? Thank you. Yeah. Njaku, is this from Guyana? Njaku, Honorable Chukuma Njaku, is that Guyana? Honorable Chukuma Njaku, can you please take the center stage? Can you talk? Okay, if not, let's go ahead, continue with Maryland for the poem. Movement of the Sun by Wada Nanyi Chima. After that, Maryland, get ready for your dish, and we're gonna have to do it quick, quick, thank you very much. Poem, Movement of the Sun by Wada Nanyi Chima, thank you.
Where should that be coming from, from the headquarters?
Yeah, from the headquarters.
Minus Minister, are you there? Can you hear us inside the room?
Mazzi Raff. Uh, Mazzy Sonny?
Yes, uh, Minister, a gemma.
Okay, uh, is it for the update from Mazzy George?
No, we, we, fir- first is the poem from Wada Nanyi Chima.
Okay, Wada Nanyi, okay.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, the mic. Just move it, move it. Yeah, go ahead.
There was one more. Uh, Prime Minister, Kellen Dimas, the Simon Eba, welcome to the United States. Um, I just want to thank you for your resilience, your wisdom and your goodness. Uh, yeah, friends, I appreciate everything you're doing for us. Uh, I also want to thank your cabinet, cabinet members, uh, the media team. All the admins from different states and, um. Uh, Bia France at large. Um, I have a poem. Uh, it's titled Movement of the New Sun. And it goes like this. We call to our ancestors brethren friends. As we go forth and undo Nigeria's sins. Biafra comes forth to refresh and redo. We will create a new cultural milieu. Three years and millions of lives lost in the struggle. But not forgotten and not for long. Nineteen sixty seven, the spiritual leader General Jukus Tepot and declared Biafra's independence to begin the reform. From a forced country destined to be war torn. No longer shall we placate the structure that mends us. And so, I hope was born from the mind of spiritual leader Nambikam. He speaks to a nation whose name we do not recognize. No victor, no banishment, no morals, no anguish for the ways he has let its people down. What it is when one cannot see the past and what it is. And cannot see the future or what it brings. Today is a state of disunion and disillusion. Jishike recall on each other as our chairs ride on fall. We are galvanized by the finisher, his excellency Mazzy Simon Eba. Keeping the flame of the movement alive to light the way. On the Biafra, the pride of our land, of the rising sun. We are waking and prepared for a new day. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, that's, that's a beautiful one. That's a beautiful one.
I think Mazzy George had a quick update, Mazzy Daniel had a little update before.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Once again, I have an update here, which is that, uh, my members. Mazzy, I just showed you a fifty dollar, I mean fifty a gemma, sorry. Uh, Mazzy Olisa, hundred a gemma and, uh. That brought it up to eleven thousand four hundred a gemma. For, for Maryland.
Keep, keep moving, non-stop. Non-stop.
And also, I have.
Your next is, um, the, your dish, present your, your dish now. That's gonna be your, your final.
Diana, Diana, the, uh, admin of Maryland is still talking, still making announcements, it's gonna be your network, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, and finally, uh, I have one more of this, uh, from admin. Uh, from California, Wada Adolou, uh, gave. One hundred a gemma to support the color notes. And, uh, that's it, so in the record, they have eleven thousand four hundred a gemma, thank you very much, God bless you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Maz, um, um. Maz, um, um, Maryland, admin Josh. Admin Josh. Admin Josh, pl- please, we are ready for you to present um, your surprise. But meanwhile, I see Mazirav Victor's hand up. Mazirav Victor, if you have an update, please do so at this moment.
Oh yes, I have an update, um, it's a very, very surprising one, but anyway. Um, I just got calls. Uh, from a old member and he wanted to do something. Um, for the prime minister of justice. He donated a hundred, a hundred a gemma, sorry. For the kola nuts, he donated fifty dollars, so total in one fifteen, overall total is one thousand and twenty-five dollars for Massachusetts, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you for that update. Okay.
There were.
Thank you, there were. Um, back to Maryland. Maryland, admin, over to you.
Um, we have a special surprise, uh, dish. That we, we don't want to say the content in it, and we threw in a challenge. Whoever does say what is in it. And this is a special instance for our PM, uh, to undertake it when it's living. Either by DHL or FedEx, whichever way. And you send it out, wherever it is, we will receive it, but we are throwing in challenge. So if anyone that can mention or review what is in there, he will win it once. And this prize, he will have a dinner, uh, at lunch.
With a beer.
Uh, yeah. So, we are throwing in challenge for someone to tell us what's inside the dish of the, of the, thank you very much. Thank you, we go, uh, Maryland, uh, Maryland they hosted today.
Yes.
Oh, no wonder, I'm wondering, I'll be wondering, okay. Alright.
Okay, my hand is up.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and I just check, uh, you know, to correct it, Maryland where Awar Oji. But United States hosting whenever the PM visit.
No.
We now do it as state by state, now where the, you know, opportunity to have the kola nuts and other stuff.
Alright.
There.
There.
The sentence, okay, my hand is up. And I think, what happened to my hand? I raised my hand up before. It's good.
Um, for us, Diana, please restart, uh, refresh your, your browser or your.
Okay, yeah, I see. I see, I see, okay, so. What a surprise, yeah.
Just.
What a surprise. Yeah. Can, can, can you open it? Uh, I can only see it after I have guessed. Maybe if I can smell the aroma, that will set me on, you know, to know, you know, what I'm thinking it is. Anyway, I'm using hundred dollars to guess that now is she, um, um, copy, um, copy.
Uh, rep, give him a hundred dollar.
Yes.
Dollar.
Yes, yeah, no, oh my goodness, a gemma, a gemma. Hundred a gemma for.
As much as I love you, it give who you would.
Okay, I think question, I, I'm putting fifty on top of it, but it would make it a hundred and fifty a gemma.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. We are here, we are eager to see what is there, we have some hands up that are also eager to see. Uh, okay, well, over to you, sir.
Now, uh, good evening all, good evening, uh, my PM, good evening all. Good evening, America. Oh, really, I challenge, I love challenge, I love challenges, that's why I, I have to wake up now to guess. Please, can you raise the bag a bit up, please, I want to see what is inside. Uh, okay, okay, also, uh, my sister made a mistake before, so I want to, that's the best out. And that it looks like, uh, two bottles of Hennessy, that is if I, if, 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 if I'm correct. So two bottles of Hennessy with hundred dollars and, oh no, hundred a gemma, please.
Another fine, okay?
No, no, hundred a gemma, that is hundred a gemma.
Fine.
Oh, please, send the Hennessy, that is, uh, uh, out here, uh, finance minister, you open it, please. I'm sure it's under, under, it's a Hennessy, please, open it, please, let's, let's just.
No, man, that is saying that you need to pay fine for saying dollars.
Thank you very much.
You haven't got into that one.
No, I, I didn't say dollar, I didn't say dollars, I corrected, I corrected before she pointed out.
We never know when we do it.
Okay, seven dollar, pay your fine.
Okay, I paid twenty, ah, dollar again, twenty a gemma, so, twenty a gemma on top, so one twenty a gemma for me, that is.
Not your free.
Okay, okay.
That is so funny.
Mazirav, okay, fine upon fine.
I always pay fine whenever it's American ton, I don't know what I did to this one.
Okay, next is Oloma, Oloma, New Jersey, Oloma. Oloma.
Oloma, unmute please.
Yeah, it's my voice coming out, I'm driving. Um, I think, um, I'm thinking that it might be Oba, because traditionally, Oji goes with Oba. So, I'm using fifty dollar.
Very good.
No, 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 no. Love, are you there for the fine?
Yeah, so. Oh my god, love man. God, okay, two dollar, add this on, a gemma, hundred dollar.
Very good, thank you.
They keep going with dollar again though.
Fine.
All the poverty, all the poverty would turn, man, popular in Jersey. Uh, dear friends, so you got to get it right.
Yeah, so.
Okay. And anyone else want to guess what is in that dish? Anyone else? Anyone else want to guess what is in that dish? Somebody has the microphone.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, so, uh, since some are prepared to see, come on, I'm here now inside this, I'm the only person.
Okay, okay, sister Ugochi raised her hand, sister Ugochi.
Uh, go ahead, she was still talking and then we didn't hear.
Challenge, anybody got a, a pot of Hennessy inside that dish? But I, I know when only got a pot of it.
Yeah, here one again, hello, how about she wear it, how about she wear it, give me the meat, huh? Okay, sister Ugochi wants to guess what is in that dish. Go ahead, sister, go ahead.
From us Diana, from us Diana, can you go out and come in again, so that your network can be corrected of the audio, because.
It does, if I, if I go, if I go out before, if, uh, it finally set me out, I may, I may not be able to come back. Let, let it just continue.
Alright, let's manage.
Okay, sister Ugochi.
Uh. Never fear.
There, well.
I, I didn't show, I didn't show no qua, oh qua, no, even yeah. Say, I, I do my hundred a gemma, simple term, oh qua, can you?
Good girl, you are a true black friend, you know you make mistake.
Okay, Chi Chi, Chi Chi's hand is up, Chi Chi, unmute yourself.
I won't G, I won't write.
Alright, each other, okay, get it, guess here.
Uh, I want to have a beer. I want to have a beer. They can, it's a matter, and it's a good idea, maybe. I'm a major, I can't go, I'm a, I'm even not a ticket. I'm a guest, he have one, he can't come, I'm a boy. Good. He can't go, I'm a good deal, because, I won't know, I can't, he can't come, so he can't come, I'm a boy.
How much?
It's, it's here, this one.
My girl.
Okay, thank you, fifty.
What's his name?
Uh, what's his name? I'm sorry. Chi Chi's hand is up, oh.
Yeah, I call Chi Chi, unmute yourself, Chi Chi. Okay.
Hello, hello, are you here, hello?
Yes, yes, we can.
There, um. Ohio is welcoming our prime minister. Um, this, I'm gonna just, uh, read the name of people donated for today's prime minister pow-haw meeting to the United States. Aziyada Okuchuku Okoye, fifty dollars.
Good, oh my goodness.
Amaka.
A gemma.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
You don't have money to like to agree.
Aziyada Amaka Awena, Awena, uh, hundred a gemma. Aziyada Ijoma H, eh, two hundred, two hundred a gemma. Um, Minister Ulo Awena, fifty a gemma, and uh, Shinwa Culture, that's me, two hundred a gemma, making it six hundred a gemma from Ohio. Thank you so much, welcome our prime minister.
Thank you, thank you. Um, okay, that's it, so we got Chi Chi plus one other hand, what's the other hand? Pascal, Pascal, unmute yourself. Pascal, unmute yourself.
Alright, um. I'm from Illinois. Mama, I got that food, um, yes, she is prime minister. Uh, I have a G. Um, that's a million, I mean, yeah, I will, Abacha. I will, I will. A G O B, I will, I will, I will, I'm prime minister, so I have a, a G fifty a gemma. Who know Abacha, whatever fifty a gemma, it's bigger than me, prime minister, go, we went to, when I'll be on the US, thank you.
Thank you, so yeah, one hundred a gemma, thank you.
From Texas.
I do, yeah, Texas.
There, well.
Okay, okay, Victor, unmute yourself, Mazirav Victor, unmute yourself.
Uh, Mazirav Pascal, I'm Abacha.
Mazirav, Mazirav Victor.
Okay, 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 today, it's today for Massachusetts, more come, more money is coming.
Amen.
Man. Oh, no, my father. And, and to put it, more, more money is coming to Massachusetts. Um, announced, and a she, a lady or a woman, it's not even an human, woman. Uh, she's, she's from Caribbean nation, Trinidad, Trinidad, uh, no, no, something, uh. She just spoke to me, you know, and she told her that's what we are doing, and she said she's interested. You know, um, them, she wanted to, to work on the prime minister with fifty a gemma. And the, the color note, fifty a gemma, total hundred a gemma. So the total overall total is one thousand one hundred and twenty-five a gemma, thank Jesus.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mazirav, Mazirav Ebuna. Okay, we have a hand up, Ifato, please unmute yourself. Mazirav Ifato. Mute yourself. Thank you.
Yeah, um. The, the, to tell the truth, the reason I raised my hand was my video has been blocked. I can't seem to, so I wanted to do that, but since, um, have you, it's still, okay, good. So since, uh, I'm here speaking, I cannot, uh, stop without doing something. So people have guessed things I wanted to guess. So let's move to the direction of, of soup. So, we don't, I don't know the kind of soup, uh, PM likes, maybe they made vegetable soup, uh, maybe a nubu soup. Um, I happen to like, uh, draw bono soup. So, with fifty dollars, I, I'll make those things, yes.
Penalty.
Uh, uh, uh.
Penalty, madam.
What, what's the penalty?
Uh, well, you. When you make a request, they pay a gemma, get one dollar, so you get one.
You know, I've been here laughing at other people for making that mistake, and I made the same mistake, so. I see, I'm just having a great time, laughing, ah, but it's making mistake today, and I made the same thing, so fifty a gemma, what is the penalty? Uh, I thought for me, so. I will, and so I, I've already supported with Texas, welcoming the PM with hundred dollars, so adding this fifty will make. I get, I make the same mistake, I make. Maybe by next time the PM comes, I would have practiced enough times, so, one hundred and fifty a gemma.
Thank you. Emery, Emery.
Thank you.
I'm on camera, camera light in New York, in my family, P R T M.
Red light. Okay, so, so Maryland, it's your time now to tell us what is in that, so we have guessed enough. Over to Maryland. Admin Josh, over to you, so that we can round this up, please. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, thank, thank. Right now, we are ending this, uh, we have to move to the next. Uh, because, uh, I've seen the response, so far so good, so, uh, rep, over to you.
Okay, uh, I, yeah, I just want to quickly contribute towards what, uh, it's idea, uh. So far, we have not really get the response that we want, uh, what we are looking for, so. Maybe we're going to revisit this, uh, this item, so that, uh, we need to do better than what I'm seeing so far. When we went to Ireland and France, uh, actually, the package are supposed to be open there with. We, because of the response, we said that, that, that will be open in US, but so far, what we have in this bag, the response so far is not impressive, so let's move to the next item, we will, we see that. But if people in US refuse to do, maybe we'll keep it to next time. But if people in US refuse to do better than, maybe we'll keep it to next time.
We have one hand up, oh.
Hold on, hold, hold on, please, hold on, Maryland, I see Madame Mkaja, and, you know, she's out there, I think she wants to say something. Yeah, Madame Mkaja, yeah.
Don't, don't, I mean. You know, all of you are, are comedians. And, and, um. I'm here laughing my head off, and you know, uh, all of you should be, and you are all comedian. And, uh, you know, laughter is a therapy. So I am sitting now. For the cheer. All of what we did from this laughing, because I'm here laughing my head off from the whole thing. So, um. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you. Okay, but I, I, I've said what I said, I don't know if you heard me though.
Yes, we heard you.
Okay, so I said I'm giving fifty Ajema for the laughter that we all derived, derived from all these, uh. I don't know, all of you are comedians. So I thank you for that.
Hmm, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, at Obabiké. At Obabiké, your hand is up.
Obabiké has no audio, Obabiké, please connect your audio, your microphone is not connected. And you can't even grab the mic. So we go to the next person. Ambaybo Emeka, over to you.
My video is also on a bed, Nico.
Okay, start your video, start your video.
Okay.